Okay, I'll stand.
Alright.
Good evening, we're ready to open the meeting for the April 2nd, 2025 Select Board meeting. We will be leaving open session to enter executive session following a motion.
Sure. I move to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 30a Subsection 21a, conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Lieutenant, Police Lieutenant and Fire Chief to be exited into open session after.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to enter an executive session for the meeting for the, for the, shall we say, the situation already concluded in the motion. Those in favor?
Dixon, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Or Yanis, yes.
Okay, we're in executive session.
Okay, thank you so much. We're back in an open session. We've been executive session for the last hour and ready to move on in our agenda. Following the executive session, we do or will be taking action in open session. We will be taking action regarding the the completion of a contract with the lieutenant for the police department. And if you, if we have a motion?
Yep, I move to approve the lieutenant's contract extension, or is it extension or?
Extension.
Memorandum of understanding, it's not actually a contract for our police lieutenant, but it is for one hundred and five thousand seven hundred ninety-nine fifty for the next fiscal year effective July first with three point five percent increases for the following two years.
Also, they, that includes a number of new duties that the lieutenant has assumed. We have a motion?
So I've moved to approve that MOU.
No second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the MOU that was reviewed by our attorney to authorize the salary of one hundred and five thousand dollars and.
Seven hundred ninety-nine fifty.
Seven hundred ninety-nine fifty for the lieutenant for fiscal year FY twenty-six and.
Specifically Lieutenant Brown, our only lieutenant.
Yes, lieutenant, our only lieutenant, Lieutenant Joseph Brown.
And what does the chief make, by the way?
A hundred and twenty thousand.
Thank you.
We have a motion? We have missed second. We have a motion made and seconded to approve the contract or the MOU as described. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second, we have, out of executive sessions, we are prepared to appoint the fire chief at a rate that was advertised, but I'll leave that for a motion for someone in the.
Yep, I move to approve a contract with James DeVergilio as the fire chief to appoint him effective today with a contract for one hundred and one thousand dollars for the first year to be renegotiated after that time and for the delegation of authority to be conducted by the TA's office immediately.
We have a motion made and seconded for the appointment of the fire chief. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our congratulations to both of those individuals and thanking them for their service. The delegation of authority will happen, I believe, hopefully in the morning and that is necessary, obviously, for the fire chief to to assume his duties. Okay, then moving on to approval of meeting minutes. We have a number of them in March. Seems like we did our due diligence in March. Wednesday, on March twelfth, we have those meeting minutes. They've been provided for you in your packet and you've had the opportunity to review them. Are there any questions, concerns, additions, subtractions?
And these were two of the fire chief interviews.
Yes.
I move to approve the March twelfth meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the March twelfth meetings, which were obviously interviews with protect, potential fire chief candidates. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
March thirteenth, a similar group of minutes.
Oh wait, sorry, I'm looking around. Oh, wait a second. Yep, go ahead.
Yeah. Those would be the second day of interviews for candidates for the position of fire chief.
I move to approve the March thirteenth meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
March seventeenth, Mr. Dixon, I believe you were absent, so that would be Mr. Genius and my responsibilities to review the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
I would move to approve March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
As presented. We have a motion made and seconded, I'll second that, to approve the March seventeenth meeting minutes as presented. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I just want to say on that one, I did, you know, watch it after the fact while I was out sick, but I appreciate everyone, you know, listening to what Joe from CMRPC had to say and moving forward. I think that'll be great for the town. So, looking forward to seeing all the things that'll come out of the CBDG grant and hopefully we'll get that.
We have executive session meeting minutes next and those meeting minutes of, or have been provided for the board. Do we have anybody make a motion for that?
I was absent for, I was the same night.
I'll move to approve the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. It's an executive session, not for release at this time.
And I would second that motion to approve the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes and to not for release. Those in favor?
Aye.
And I would second that. Aye.
I'm staying.
Yeah. Okay, we have one abstention. Oh, you have March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, again, meeting minutes?
I'd move to approve the March twentieth meeting minutes. This was the discussion about the fire chief interviews and selection of a fire chief.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from March twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. March twenty-sixth, we have meeting minutes that have been provided for you and are available to you.
I move to approve the March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the March twenty-sixth meeting minutes and that was the discussion of the interim town administrator search. I'm just waiting for.
Make the motion on the March seventeenth executive session.
I did.
He did. And I seconded.
Alright, so I'm sorry.
March twelve, twenty-sixth, meeting minutes.
I made a motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a motion made and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for the twenty-sixth of March, twenty twenty-five, and those would be for public release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think that takes care of the meeting minutes for March. A few more meeting minute, meetings than we usually have, but we've had some important personnel to to manage. This, that was good. Okay, I know now that we have something that I'd like to take care of because it's in personnel and that would be the appointment of our building commissioner, that individual who's been, you know, interviewed at an earlier date, but due to her travel, she was met unable to accompany us for an appointment until this evening. So building commissioner appointment, this is. Ms. Brenda Church is with us and Kami, do you want to handle that?
There's a resume at the end right there. She ended up.
Right aside of you. Well, I have a thing, but do I have a recommendation of that?
Yes, so Andrea ended up and Sandy ended up going through all the interviews and that's, they ended up picking Brenda Church for the appointment on that.
Okay, she'd be appointed as the building commissioner. She has been the interim, I believe?
Yes, she's been interim.
Since the other building inspector did leave us, a number of individuals were interviewed for the position and she has the commissioner status that is not easy to find and has a wonderful reputation and has done wonderful work with us as our interim. So I looked for a motion to approve the appointment of the building inspector Brenda Church, who is with us this evening if anyone has questions.
I move to approve the appointment of Brenda Church as the building commissioner.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the appointment of the building commissioner for the town of Barry, Brenda Church. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brenda, would you like to make any comments to the group? I know you've been working in town for a little bit, so.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity and I hope, you know, I can, I've been learning the town, so hopefully I can do, keep doing that to provide Barry with what they need.
Okay, well, great. We've been really pleased with your performance and happy to have you and you've been immediately, shall we say, paid time and attention to us even though you were our interim. We were sort of stuck between, okay, and. Yes, and you did a phenomenal job in sorting, taking care of the people in the community that needed your help. So thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for being here this evening.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
I do just want to mention for, oh, but for anyone who's here regarding the, sorry, the interim town administrator interviews, the first person listed on here did withdraw, so we don't have that first interview, so we're taking care of other business on the agenda in the meantime until the second scheduled interview. Just in case anyone's curious why that didn't start ten minutes ago.
Okay, so we have our next piece of business. I would move on to town administrator report.
Yeah, I only have two announcements. Beginning Wednesday, May seventh, and all Wednesdays through September third, the senior center will reopen at till seven PM and the seniors that can come play pool games and have some organized activities. It's just to get people that work all day be able to come and enjoy the senior center. And the only other thing I just wanted to mention is I know finance committee and select board have this book posted. This is for the regional dispatch district informational session. It's tomorrow night. It's at six PM at the Rutland Public Library, two eighty Main Street, and there's also a Zoom link, but I would like as many people to see what's going on with the district because they want to change it into a district. So it's important, it's very informational and it's be a good guideline for everyone to look at, so.
How many individual communities are in the organization?
There's five of, five.
Five of us?
Yep. Side up.
Okay, I know that we've posted that as a meeting over in Rutland tomorrow night in case more than one of us will be there. I know I will be there in attendance. I think you will be.
I will be there.
And if anyone else wants to come, they can because we have posted the meeting. And so moving on town, select board member reports.
Well, barring anything dramatic, I think this is my last meeting.
What could be so dramatic?
You know, we just listed off one, two, three, four, five March meeting minutes that we just approved, so.
So you never know what could happen tomorrow.
Yeah, but no, I appreciate the opportunity that the town's given me to serve in this position. It's been, I can't believe it's been three years ago since both you and Greg lied to me and told me it was only a couple hours of meetings a week or a month, so.
That's what they told me. I wasn't going to tell.
But it's, it's, you know, certainly things, you know, you come into it with with big expectations of how things are going to go and how you want to move the town forward and sometimes before things can move forward, you're, you know, trying to get traction and, you know. There's a lot of ups and downs involved, but I'm really happy to have, you know, to have done this, to have been able to serve my town and, you know, to know that I'm, I'm a member of this community, not just a resident in this town, and I hope everyone in the town can feel that way. I just.
Well, thank you, John. You've done amazing things working with open space, also working with some central mass regional planning. You've done wonderful things to transition Tammy into the job and to help her with some grants. I know that getting the parks grant and also ensuring that we would have playgrounds for our children certainly was a goal of mine, but certainly a goal that you shared, Mark also shared, and that we made tremendous project on, progress on. So you've accomplished a lot for the community and I describe the job as one step forward, two steps back on any given day, but other than that, you know, it's, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity to serve and sometimes it's not fun, but other times it's rewarding. So thank you very much. I know you've sacrificed some things with your children to be here with us on certain days. He wouldn't give up his birthday, but he did sacrifice a lot of other times.
If it was just my birthday, that'd be a different story, but it's my daughter's.
Yeah, but anyway, so I always knew I would have a partner in the Christmas parade regardless of the weather and a partner in Memorial Day, so thank you for that.
You are going to stay on doing this, all CMRPC stuff, right?
I'm, I'm happy to to assist as as needed, you know, and if if the board wants to appoint me to continue with the master plan once that gets more funding as just another citizen, I'm, I'm happy to continue on with that when the time comes for it.
Keep going.
Hopefully we'll get, and I don't want to keep going too much, so.
Well, thank you, John, and I, I think it's going to be the last meeting, but I wouldn't promise. Okay.
Not till, what, eight o'clock tomorrow to post.
Pretty much, yeah, we couldn't post it after that. Okay, so other than that, we have any special correspondence, Tammy?
No.
Anything special?
No, not that, anything that I would say is probably EPW.
Okay, we're, we're going to begin the interview of candidates probably at quarter seven on the date, the time. We had three individuals who indicated, actually more than that, who, and then the, the, the credentials were reviewed, Tammy and others on the board, and there were three individuals we had put down for interviews. Two of the individuals who had, one of whom had Barry experience as well as another individual who you indicated had declined to participate. Because of their circumstances, they said, oh, we're, oh, it's an interim. Well, I think we could have some applicants for the full-time position. We made it clear that if you wanted the full-time position, we weren't going to consider you as an interim. So we do have one interview candidate this evening who will be coming in at six forty-five. We could talk a little bit if we could, John, you want to talk a little bit about our, the stuff that you have been managing for the town for a period of time?
So there is, you know, as, as has been discussed at other meetings, there has been an internal investigation into a select board member. I've been overseeing that investigation as a selectman. Moving forward, there are a couple options. So one option that was considered we had a discussion of legal counsel would be for me to continue on as a special manager. I am going to, I, I've been considering it heavily and I, I'm not comfortable continuing on in that role as an unelected person. So I, the other options would be to find someone else in town who is elected, you know, potentially the, sorry, town clerk. Also legal counsel, generally in some things like this, in other towns, legal counsel will be overseeing it. So that's an option for us and I, I do think I would recommend it. There's, there's not, there's really not much left for them to oversee, frankly. It just needs to be.
Wrapped up.
Wrapped up and released, essentially, so.
I, I agree with you that, you know, I appreciate the fact that you thought about, you know, continuing on, but I understand your desire to make a break at this point because it makes sense. It makes sense for you and it makes sense for the process. We have talked with our representative at KP Law and there's an attorney who is now assigned to this. assigned to this and to wrap this up.
It's a person that I've interacted with previously on matters related to this when trying to determine if something's in scope, if something is, you know, where the town responsibility lies and things. So, this is someone who's familiar with it.
So, he will be picking up this responsibility effective immediately on the.
That's my, my recommendation.
On the vote of the committee, of the, of the board. So, I would indicate and recommend to the board that attorney Brian Maser, representing the town of Barry from KP Law, be assigned to continue and complete the internal investigation that has been ongoing in the town. Do you need a motion?
There's some comment, questions?
Will you at least vote on whether or not you're going to fully release the report?
Not at this time.
I, I mean, I think we can make a motion to vote to release it sight unseen. I, I would, I would make a motion to release it when, as soon as it's available, pending legal's approval.
When it's sight unseen, I mean?
As far as we haven't seen it, but legal counsel has seen it, redacted any sensitive information from someone who's, you know, potentially whistleblown.
Well, I think.
I don't think there's any reason not to release it, so I'd be fine making that motion.
I think we first have to decide who's going to complete the management of the process. So, let's take that vote first, and then let's look at the other vote, which is to release it sight unseen if that's what the board would like to do. So, the motion that I would entertain at this time is the utilizing KP Law and the representative Brian Maser to continue to manage the investigation that has been ongoing to its completion.
I would make that motion.
Okay, we have that motion. I would second that motion.
Oh, we do have another question.
Yes, Mr. Thompson?
I don't know if you're, if you know, but I'll ask anyway. How much money, how many, how much money has been expended thus far on this investigation? How much money does this board imagine would be ultimately expended from this point on?
I, I would tell you, I couldn't give you an exact number.
I don't have it on any, but.
I can give an estimate. Again, it's just an estimate. It's not exact because I'm not sure of the exact. But I'd say the estimate would be around $80,000. We have not received a March bill, and it's not done yet, so I don't know how many hours are left.
And we imagine there will be some fee from KP Law to complete wrapping this process up. So, we don't know what that will be yet, but we have, now, once we vote to authorize KP Law to become involved with us, we'll have a much better knowledge because they will have access to the data and the documents and so forth.
Is it, yeah, no, you started, this board started this investigation sometime ago. Do you feel that it's worth spending the money, or has it been a fishing exposition?
So, what I would say about it is that I, I personally don't know the results of this report. It's not completed, it's not compiled. I believe that the board had a duty to move forward with the information that was presented, and we've done that.
Jason?
I just have one question about KP Law being the person that's handling it. Is there any conflict in that as far as them representing the town of Barry, as far as how they would handle the situation to try to, you know, hold back or anything that's going to hold the town liable for a select person's actions?
At this point, we do not believe that that is the case at all, and have been advised to the fact that they would be wrapping it up. They're not going to go in there and muck around with, with what has been done. They're just going to finalize it.
In, in most towns, in most cases, the legal counsel for the town handles it all the way through. And the fact I was able to do it, that I had approval to do it, has just been a cost-saving measure, but this is typically how they are handled.
When you say wrapping it up, employment practices group is going to compile it, finalize the report, just give it to the law firm. They're going to redact it for legal reasons, but they're not going to write.
They're not changing any of the content. The, the only thing as far as overseeing would be if something new comes in, is that within the scope or is it not within the scope? That's, that's really the only question that keeps having to be asked.
So, the motion that's on the floor is just to authorize our, our use of KP Law to continue the work that the man, that the manager, okay, was doing, and obviously will be unable to do since he will no longer be a select board member. So, can we have, we have a motion, I believe?
Yep, I think you seconded it.
And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
And then one abstention. Okay, so we'll be able to move on with that process. As far as the release, the release question that you asked, when it would be released, I know that you say you think it should be sight unseen. I think we should take advice from our attorney as to how it should be released.
I, I would say, I would move to release the report once approved by the, by KP Law, by Brian.
Yeah. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Are you going to make a motion?
That, yeah, that, I'll make that motion.
Do, I would, I would, I would think it might be prudent for us to ask KP Law if that seems reasonable.
Well, it's cost $80,000 of taxpayers' money. Why don't you share it with the town?
Well, we're going to.
I, I think realistically what I would like to do right now, I'm going to make this motion. I'm going to say, I make a motion that we, that the report be released to the public once approved by legal, by KP Law. If KP Law comes back and then says, that's not okay, you can't do that, then the select board at that time should rescind this vote. If the select board wants to rescind this vote for other reasons, I'm going to question it, but that will be beyond my term. So, that, that's the motion I would make.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want to take some of the, some of the verbiage out and just say you would, you indicate when a legal counsel has affirmed that it should be appropriately released, that's when it would be released?
Right, that's, that's the motion I would say.
So, that's the motion.
I'll make it again.
Okay.
I move that the report be released as soon as, to the public once approved by legal.
Okay.
KP Law, Brian.
Got it? Okay, I will second that.
We'll say KP Law because who knows?
Yes, I will second that motion. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded, okay? Do you have that?
Yeah.
Okay, that the report would be released once we have approval from KP Law, that it's legally appropriately redacted when necessary. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Okay, we have two approval. Okay, that's moving that along. Okay, we have now, we have no correspondence. Let's go now to CMRPC zoning update contract.
Yeah, all right, so we got one more fun one before, for me. So, as I think we've discussed, we put together an application for, was this One Stop?
Yes.
Yeah, so this was last year's One Stop grant application, and we received, we were awarded funding for a zoning update. This is going to include proposals for all new zoning, new maps, and it's going to involve input from the town. This, after it's completed, it would need to be approved at town meeting, just like any other zoning changes, but this will update a lot of the zoning language, update different aspects of the town, and it's going to be, involve a lot of input from the town on how to do that. The zoning, sorry, the planning board was in support of this grant when we put in the application. They even gave a letter of support through the process. So, we're really excited to now have this funding and be ready to move forward. So, we have a contract with CMRPC to do that funding. We do have a portion that we dedicated to it from ARPA funds. Do you remember the?
$5,700.
$5,700. We set aside from ARPA once we knew we'd received the grant last year, and now we're ready to move forward with it. So, I would move to approve the contract between CMRPC and the town of Barry for the zoning update.
I'll second it.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the CMRPC zoning update contract. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Yep.
Okay, we have.
We have a question.
Is this the zoning update process going to be completed by CMRPC, or are they just, are they going to just overset, use oversight and expect the town residents to complete this?
So, in, in the deliverables, if we will be provided with a full new zoning bylaw, new zoning maps, and a word document version of the same zoning bylaw. So, they will provide these finalized documents after getting input from the town, and then those will go to town meeting to be either approved or rejected. And that is being paid for out of the One Stop grant that we were approved for last year.
Another thing we're going to miss you for.
There's still, yeah, well, it's going to be interesting, but, you know, we'll still, we'll still be around.
Okay. Okay, moving on, seasonal license renewals for Colebrook RV Resort, liquor license approval, common vitulers, inholder license approval, and entertainment approval. Those are the three licenses that are requested for reproof for annual renewal by the Colebrook RV Resort. We have a motion. All the documents are in?
Okay. I move to approve the liquor license, common vitulers slash inholder license, and entertainment renewal for Colebrook RV Resort.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve those renewals of liquor license, common vitulers, inholder license, and entertainment renewal license for Colebrook RV Resort. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have some appointments. Cable TV Advisory Committee, Mr. Michael Moran has indicated an interest to work with that committee.
Great.
We have his documents and so forth in for your approval.
I would move to approve Michael Moran as a cable TV advisory committee member.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the appointment of, of Michael Moran to the T, cable TV advisory committee. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a similar request for appointment to Michael Moran, Moran to the Historical Commission.
I move to approve, to appoint Michael Moran to the Historical Committee, Historical Commission.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to appoint Michael Moran to the Historical Commission. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have also an appointment requested by the Council on Aging to appoint Dennis Fleming to the Council on Aging.
I move to appoint Dennis Fleming to the Council on Aging.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the appointment of Dennis Fleming to the Council on Aging. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask a question on that? How many people are allowed to be on that board, and how many people can be on the board currently?
Okay.
Do you have those numbers, Sandy?
Nine.
It's up to nine, but we're, well, short of that, I believe.
I think we're one short.
We're one short now. All right, good.
We think we have, we have nine. We think we have eight at this point. We can check that. One thing I, we are, a person who's going to be interviewed is not scheduled to be here until 6:45. I'd ask the board to be recessed at this time, just while we wait for that individual to arrive, as we have no further business actually included on the rest of the agenda.
Okay.
We are, are we in recess?
Does that take a vote, or is that just the chair?
Okay, I'll just make the.
I think the chair just.
I'll just make the call to be in recess for probably about 10 minutes.
Oh, I wanted to ask a question before we.
Oh, I wanted to ask a question before we, we're-
Take this opportunity to welcome Greg Balakonas to the town of Barry. We will probably dispense with a lot of sort of information about the town of Barry.
Sure.
You know, you've been part and parcel of history as an interim previous to Tammy's hire. Sam?
Remember, remember I wanted to say something.
You wanted to say, would you like to say something as a, after the, after he's introduced?
No, no, I want to say something now and then we have to do is that before we signed off, you were having a discussion about the senior center.
Yes.
And I wanted to say that I went to an affair, it was suggested that I go to an affair at the senior center, and I did go there one afternoon, and I want to give kudos to the senior center because they did such a nice job.
Oh, great.
That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Back again to the reason we're here at this time is Mr. Balakonas is welcome.
Nice to be here.
And, yeah, it hasn't been, unfortunately, it hasn't been very long since we've had your services, and we are seeking the opportunity, obviously, to work with an interim town administrator for a period of time in order to sort of take the distance between Tammy's, you know, exit to the entrance of a new permanent town administrator. We know that that's something that you've done in your past and continue to do currently. So let me ask you, why are you interested in coming back to this position in the town of Barry?
So, I like the town of Barry, it's in my blood, I enjoyed my eight-month tenure that I was here as interim. I want to help the board in terms of finding the right candidate and keeping things moving in the meantime. I know that you have town meeting that's coming up.
We do.
So I'm well aware what needs to be done leading into town meeting. But I, just a little bit of background, as I work, I try to work about one interim position a year. I most recently worked in the town of Mendon last summer, a four-month job, similar town, similar in terms of its demographics and a lot of similarities in terms of the size of the staff, little bit different in terms of the wealth of the community, it was a little bit different in that regard, but that was a position that I asked for. And then I had three other positions in addition, addition here as interim town administrator. So I've done the dance, I know what needs to be done, I can get up to speed pretty quick in terms of what's going on in the town and work with Tammy and the board in terms of addressing any and all issues that you've got.
Well, thank you so much. And, no question?
Oh, we have questions. Please describe your understanding of the role of town administrator within a municipality, and specifically how you would work to ensure a smooth transition to the next town administrator. Additionally, give us an example of your ability to manage or supervise others.
So, in terms of my understanding of the job, I work hand-in-hand with the board in terms of drafting the town administrator bylaw and rewriting that thing many times, so I'm quite familiar with what the job entails. I've worked in communities for 36 years, bigger communities than this, but in terms of my understanding what the position entails, it's part-time. So given that it's a part-time position, you have to be a triage manager, you have to decide what the critical issues are to spend your time on versus the less critical issues that either can be delegated or passed down to other individuals. So I think that's kind of one of the strengths that I have. In terms of my ability to supervise people, my supervisory style is I'm open, I don't have, if I have a problem or I see an issue, I work people to it. I tend to be a little bit hands-off this position because of the fact that it's part-time and it's for an interim position, not as much hands-on supervision that you normally would have, but I would speak with Tammy and find out whatever personnel issues may be out there. Certainly those issues cannot be ignored, any type of human resource issue needs to be addressed and dealt with on a timely basis or there's consequences that may come up. And John, the second part of your question was?
Well, it was actually to give us an example of your ability to manage or supervise others, and I think you kind of talked about that.
Yeah, I think, I think I've got a good understanding in terms of my ability to manage and supervise my eight months that I was here, because probably the best demonstration of my ability to supervise and manage individuals.
Okay. Mark?
Number three.
What's that?
Number three.
Yeah. Anyway, how does what you did in your past job or jobs prepare you for the position of interim town administrator? Describe your experience in municipal, excuse me, budget development, contract negotiation, and human resource administration.
Yes to all of those questions, Mark. I've done them all. I'm retired, I'm not interested in a permanent position, but the other nice thing is if I'm hired for this position, I'll stay until you don't want me to stay anymore. So I'm not looking to go and move on to another job. When I was here, I worked with the finance committee with the board and department heads in development of the budget. I came on board about April 1st, so the timing is kind of similar to the timing that's here today, and so I understand that the key priority would be development of the budget and really dealing with the dynamic flow of the budget in terms of what's happening on the state level with funding, in terms of what's happening with town with what its available funds that it has, and I'm sure that those things have already been vetted through Tammy and the county, so I'm sure that it documented, that's a living document that you kind of keep, need to keep up to date and work with. In terms of my negotiations and contracts, I think when I was here last time in mission of the board, one of the town leaders said I had to negotiate all the contracts, and I don't mean to pat myself on the back, but I did it on my own with minimal help from town council. My attitude in terms of dealing with contracts is similar, where they look at the job, I like to build some trust, to show that I'm a man of my word and reliable and that I'm expert in terms of what the town's municipal finances are, and so I put those things right out there when I deal with contract negotiations. It's sometimes more art than science, it's how you present yourself and how interested you are, and I think I might have mentioned this a long time ago when I was here, sometimes in collective bargaining, you need to kind of lose a couple of battles to win the war, so that you need to be prepared that you can't go in and expect that the municipal side is going to win on every single matter, and sometimes in the interest of getting a settlement is more critical than getting every single issue resolved. Now, what I would do is I would work closely with the board and find out what your priorities are for contract negotiations, and we would translate those into whatever proposals are that we present in the meetings.
Give an example during your employment history, anyway, whether when you were permanent or when you've been an interim, that you've had to think really outside the box and come at a problem in a way that would have really stunned people to say, "You're going to do what?"
So, the last job I was in, in the Sleepy County town of Mendon, I discovered there was, there were no minutes going back for like three or four years, and we got a Freedom of Information Act request, happened to be looking for minutes, and so, and the person who was responsible for doing those minutes ended up leaving upon that discovery. So that was something that needed to happen because that was the person's job. So, really, we had to bring in someone to go through and look at all the videos and set the development from scratch, and it was a challenging job, but I felt as though it was something that needed to be done, it wasn't something I could put aside, and it seemed kind of manial in terms of a town administrator doing it. I didn't actually do it myself, but when that person left, I was a one-person office. So it wasn't up to me to hire the next administrative assistant, Sandy's job, because I was only there for a short period of time. So I swallowed the bullet and did all of the necessary administrative work in addition to being the town administrator manager, and I did it all within a certain number of hours a week.
Wow.
Yep. So I got a couple of great years. Now, I didn't do it as well as Sandy, I know that's true.
Let me ask you a question that's a little out of sync, but one that I really would like you to grapple with a little bit. Please describe your experience with 30B and ensuring municipal compliance with 30B.
Yeah, so when I was a full-time town administrator, I was certified in procurement, so I had my procurement officer training. I'm, I have high-level expertise in 30B, also Chapter 149 and Chapter 7, which deals with public works, construction, 149 deals with buildings and architecture. All of those have their own rules and regulations and stuff like that, so, so before you really do anything with those things, you need to look at what the matrix is, and I know there's one that's here somewhere in the office, which describes what the advertising requirements are, what the bid requirements are, and you have to follow those things to the letter of the law.
Right.
Which may be meeting solicitation sub-bids and doing all those things, and everything needs to be kind of airtight, because if it's not airtight, you're subject to a bid challenge and a bid protest, and those things delay. So, one of the things I did when I was in my last position, the town wanted to acquire a fire truck, but the staff that was there before me didn't have the expertise to put the bid document together, so I worked with the fire chief in putting together a bid document. We solicited bid proposals and as I was leaving, they were successful in terms of getting a bid award done. That project had been put on the shelf for about a year, because no one really knew what the next steps were to take, but while I was here, I did have some bid experience. I know that I had worked with Jason in terms of putting out some of the public works bids that had been put aside, and also heating oil and things like that were done, so I have a good cough about them with that.
Great.
And if I don't understand it, I know that I can contact the Inspector General's office and/or town council, both were experts.
Okay, great. Okay, there's one question left out here that we can go ahead and do, John.
Sure. The town of Barry is a member and host of a number of intermunicipal agreements. Describe your experience managing intermunicipal agreements and how you ensure that adequate communication with other member towns is handled.
Sure, the first thing I would do is sit down with Tammy and with Sandy and find out what IMAs may be out there that we have, that are existing. My recollection is there was, there's a shared communication center, as I recall, I don't remember if that's an IMAs or not, but certainly the way to create government efficiency is to combine services with another community, to the extent we can do that and do so at a lesser cost and equal or better service, and I think that those are kind of critical things, is equal or better service we want to be able to provide for the tax dollars, then I'm open to that. You know, in all of my towns, as I'm looking back, we had shared services, one of the communities I was in, we started a regional communication center, which was quite large. I think here we're a member with Rutland, but we're not necessarily a voting member, but in that community that I was in, we kind of created a separate entity, which was a governing board for the communication center, and did all of the work that was kind of necessary to staff that and meet regularly, and it was, it was a challenge. I don't think that that's going to be the case here, but whatever, whatever IMAs are out there, I certainly will work to get those things done.
There actually is discussion on making the Rutland dispatch more of a
District.
A district, and that conversation's actually happening tomorrow.
Yeah, so the, so the district is exactly what we had in another community, and it worked fine.
Let me, since we have that meeting tomorrow night, let me ask you a question. As the district, okay, as the district concept, okay, probably, is it predicated primarily on the number of individuals in the population?
Well, it can be based on population by how much we allocate towards it, is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm asking, who has the power and how do we ensure that our, that our needs and so forth are met and that we just don't get lost in the shuffle?
Yeah, so in the, in the district that I was in previously, the, each community had two members, so it was designated the board as secretary of town administrator. It made no difference what the size of the community was.
Oh, okay.
All of those votes were equal.
Okay.
So it was, and that was the governing board, and then there was an operational board, which consisted of the police chief and fire chief from the respective communities. So any of the kind of the hiring stuff came to the operations board, and the operations board did the interview for the candidate, but the governing board was ultimately responsible for approving those hiring decisions, any disciplinary actions, and the budget.
Yeah.
So the budget, the budget actually was allocated on the basis of a factor of 911 emergency calls and the size of the community, and those numbers were kind of factored together, and that's how the budget was divided up amongst the communities.
Thank you. Get me prepared for tomorrow night.
You're going to see a lot, so they're going to talk about, this is going to be one member of each community, and they're going to talk about like different ways that, it can either be by population, there's so many, there's a few different ways that they can decide upon, I don't think they've decided that yet, but they'll discuss that tomorrow.
I, I think really our big concern in this area is that there have been conversations from other towns about regionalizing in different areas, and, you know, we don't want that to stall during an interim period and hope that there's still interest later on. So, you know, I understand, you know, sometimes things sit until we have a full-time town administrator, but, you know, where there's interest from other towns, sometimes we need to be able to move, you know.
Well, certainly in terms of regional dispatch, I've got experience in that.
Any further questions? Do you have any questions of us? I know you're familiar with the
So when, when do you envision the position of
I would, I would envision the position would become available sometime in early to mid-May.
Okay.
And that it would proceed until, I, it's very difficult, we need to get through town meeting.
Yeah.
We need to, you know, get through those very tough months. I am very involved at the state level in the budgeting process, and I would say there's a lot of struggles at that level, and whether or not they will be able to give us a budget July 1, they never do, but I mean even close to that.
Right.
I think it's going to be very difficult. I know that school funding will be one of their big problems, and it'll be one of the last things that they will be able to fashion, and as a result, I believe going to town meeting without having those education numbers would make us just put a number in that nobody's going to vote for.
So, so the
So I worry about that, that whole town meeting time.
June, June, second week of June.
June and into July, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
I think we'll probably have a June town meeting that will have to be, you know, either, you know, recessed until a date and time certain, because we will not have information from the state which will make it possible for us to back into a balanced budget.
Just one other question, when I was here, the town was considering use of the ARPA money.
Oh, yeah.
Are there any of those projects that are out there?
There are projects, it's all been allocated, but there are active projects.
Oh, yeah.
There are projects
We're going to be building a playground.
Good imagination.
We're going to be building a playground, all kinds of good stuff.
We actually, we also got a park grant to supplement ARPA funds, so we have a playground that we can begin July 1st.
A lot of chapter, a lot of chapter 90 money with a lot of roadwork that's necessary for us, so, yeah, with a lot of, a lot of stuff.
And still working with CMRPC in terms of the grant procurement?
Yeah, we have a few new grants going on there.
Well, I mean It is what it is.
It's, I mean, to me, it's pretty straightforward, I hate to sound kind of gullible about it, but it's, I kind of know what the job entails.
Right.
Each, each town has its own unique personalities and politics, and Barry's no different than any other?
Well, obviously, we would need to have conversations with you regarding what would be the timeframe when you would be available, should you, you know, and what would be the compensation, and need we spend time, you know, having that conversation this evening or wait until the board has finalized the appointment, and then we would sit down and grapple with that?
I think that's, I think that's a good plan, is, is once you make a decision on who your interim is going to be, if it happens to be me, you just need, merely need to reach out.
Okay.
We had a contract last time.
Yes, we did.
I expect if it's made, that it'll be substantially similar to that, maybe a couple of little tweaks that we both might want, but, is what it is.
Any questions, any other questions for us?
No.
I mean, I know it's, you know, you've just been, been gone about a year.
Yeah, I noticed all the vines are taken down from the front of the building.
Yes.
Left a couple of little marks, I don't see if there's
Any questions, any questions?
No, he answered them last day once he was here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Greg, for coming in, and we'll be back in touch with haste.
Yeah, sure. I'll be around.
Okay, thanks again. Nice to see you.
Mark.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, very much. Thank you. Just best wishes. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, obviously, I mean, I would, generally, we would say we'll wait for an appointment till we've checked references, but the last place he sort of worked was with us.
Second to last, but yeah.
Yeah, second to last, so, all right, what's the board's position on what you'd like to do, because we can do a little more background, I guess, but I don't know what that would entail, since we've worked with him already for numbers of months.
I mean, considering the other applicants have withdrawn, which understandable, you know, some of them may be interested full-time after the fact and, you know, whatever it comes down to, but certainly has helped us through before. I think, you know, he was, worked well with the people here, I believe, so.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's, that's one of the critical things.
Well, I mean, I, we're fortunate to have, at least had the history, so we know what we're getting.
Yeah.
Very much so, hit the ground running.
Okay. Okay, I entertain a motion.
I would move to offer the position of interim town administrator to Greg Balakonas.
Contingent upon a negotiated contract?
Contingent on a contract.
Yeah, a second now.
A motion made and seconded to offer Mr. Greg Balakonas the contract or the appointment to act as our interim town administrator, a date and time certain, contingent upon a appropriate MOU drafted between the board, our attorney, and Mr. Balakonas.
Okay.
We have a motion on that?
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And we'll, you know, whatever is in that contract as far as an appropriate amount of time to have some overlap with Tammy to make sure everyone's up to speed before we go, and we'll take it from there.
Okay. I think we're at a point where we are into old business that we have nothing on the agenda for, and thus I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
We have
One more question, more, it was about, are we going to try, are we going to try to set a 112 budget? Is, are you not, are you concerned that we're not going to have
I'm concerned that the state is going to have a 112 budget. I spend most of my time at the state these days and very involved in the budget process.
So you're concerned that their problems are about to become our problems?
Well, their problems
That's what I picked up on
Yes. I do not, I do not believe that we would be involved in a 112 budget, but I worry that the Commonwealth will be very late in its July deliberations, and thus we'll probably be going a little blind. What I worry about is the huge place where, okay, it's going to be the school budget. The school budget, there's tons of stuff going on at the state level about
Just our $105 billion script out of Pittsburgh, losing $6.9 billion.
Yeah, yeah, and it's not any better, it's other places. And watch where rural school money goes, because rural school money, there's huge amounts that should be in that, allocated to that, that's iffy. Obviously, Quabbin, huge, big rural school district, regional transportation, special ed transportation, all of those areas are, you know, up in the air, and that's not good news for any, any, any of the schools. 319 school districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, 292 are positioned to get zero Chapter 70 increase, but Quabbin is one of them. Quabbin is one of them, Quabbin is 60% maybe of our budget, okay, that's going to be a problem. To say nothing of all of the other problems that exist that have nothing to do with the schools that will impact us, I think, you know, the fact of getting any additional local aid, slim to none. I mean, we'll get that very modest thing that we've seen roll out in the governor's budget, we've seen a very modest thing for all of those school districts to get no Chapter 70 to get $75 a student, it's not going to, you know, so I think it's going to be a very tough year, not only because it's always a tough year, obviously, you know, we have some debt exclusions that we're worried about for, you know, on Monday, that will change the dynamics of some of our work. So, yeah, I'm nervous, I'm more nervous than usual, but it's part of the process, you know, working with the state, being heavily dependent on the state for revenue, really makes it hard for the towns, very hard, and hard for the people, and, you know, pretty soon, though, the excise tax on the new, you know, cars that will be $8,000 more than they used to be, I mean, hey, we should be rolling in big bucks with the excise tax, kidding, I'm just kidding. So, anyway, but, yeah, I think, I think next Tuesday they'll talk again about budgets. We have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to adjourn, we're adjourned.
Aye.
Aye.